Since mid-April.
So...
And we were certified for narcotics after the second week of May, and then completed his tracking and apprehension certifications in late July.
Very good.
Took a little bit of time to get the... Took a little bit of time to get the patrol certification, because he had to do all the certifications off-leash. But for that, he just liked it.
So basically, he was certified since July?
He is.
Has he had any action yet?
We've been called out three times, two tracks, and a... A school sniff, a car vehicle sniff, and a school sniff. So literally four times.
Chief, you remember 20 years ago when we first got Ice?
Yes.
And I went on the drug raid with him?
Mm-hmm.
It was so interesting to watch that dog go straight to those drugs in the coat and the closet. I was like, "Okay."
This one is not as nice as Ice.
He's nice. Ice is nice.
He's pretty nice.
He's nice right now, but he can say one word, and he's... Look at him, "Okay."
Yeah.
Feed you.
He knows how my arm tastes.
Feed you?
Yeah. Very good. Thank you, Trey.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you. I'll take care.
What a great addition, Chief. Very fortunate.
Very fortunate. A great citizen, great business owner, he has...
Yep.
That's what makes this a great place to live and work.
Yep. Thank you. Our next presentation this evening is from Chief Darren Green again, Lieutenant Matt Timmerman. As I alluded to earlier, graduated from the FBI National Academy. Very proud of you, Matt.
Mayor and Council, on Thursday, September 13th, Lieutenant Matt Timmerman graduated from the FBI National Academy Program in Quantico, Virginia. The 207th session of the National Academy consists of 228 men and women from 48 states, District Columbia, 25 international countries, full military organization, and five federal civilian organizations. Internationally known for his academy excellence, the National Academy Program, L.E.T.FBI Academy, offer 10 weeks of advanced communication, leadership, and fitness training for selected officers having proven records as professional with their agencies. On average, these officers have 21 years of law enforcement experience and usually return to the agency to serve in executive level positions. Matt began his service with the Lexington Police Department in February 1997, rises to the ranks as Corporal Sergeant, and then being promoted to Lieutenant in 2007. He has worked in the Patrol Division as Lieutenant, Criminal Investigation Division, Special Operations Division, and is currently the Commander of the Office of Professional Standards. Matt is married to his wife for 25 years, Elizabeth Timmerman, and has two daughters, and he attends St. Lucie in a Lutheran church here in Lexington. So I present to you Matt Timmerman. A lot of people don't know, only 2% of all law enforcement will ever go to the FBI National Academy. We have four graduates here. We also sent... I always like to put a pun in for myself. We sent him also. So we sent him to greatness. But it's a great achievement to go through the FBI National Academy. We're glad to have Matt back. So thank you for presenting. Thank you.
Very good.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Council.
Thank you. Matt, if you'd like to say anything, the microphone's yours. We'd love to hear from you.
I'm just thankful of the town for the support, to not just meet with my wife and my children. It's been a great time of living here, and I look forward to the future of this park.
Thank you so much, Matt.
Thank you.
Congratulations again. Should be very proud of that. Our next presentation this evening is a proclamation that will be read by Councilmember Todd Lau. I won't read the entire heading of this one. I'll let Councilmember Lau go ahead and read it.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Eric Russell, you're here with us. Eric is the Director of Forensic and Outreach Services at the Dickinson Children's Advocacy Center. Let me go ahead and read this, and then hand it to you. Proclamation of the Mayor and Council of the Town of Lexington, South Carolina, declaring October 2018 as Domestic Violence Awareness Month. Whereas the Town of Lexington is a community of compassion and is dedicated to being a wonderful place to live and raise a family, and whereas domestic violence is a serious crime that affects people of all races, ages, gender, and income levels, and whereas children are often the silent witnesses that are as threatened as whoever the predator is offending, and whereas domestic violence costs the nation billions of dollars annually in medical expenses, police and court costs, shelters, foster care, sick leave, absenteeism, and non-productivity, and whereas Domestic Violence Awareness Month can provide an opportunity for citizens to learn more about preventing domestic violence and to show support for the numerous organizations like the Dickerson Children's Advocacy Center, which provides critical services and assistance to victims of domestic violence. Now, therefore, be it known that the Mayor and Council for the Town of Lexington, South Carolina hereby proclaim October 2018 as Domestic Violence Awareness Month and urge all citizens to support efforts to combat domestic violence and assist in projects which support families who need help in coping with this unfortunate societal problem. Dated this first day of October 2018. Signed, Steve McDougal, Mayor.
Thank you. Mr. Russell, if you'd like, please come to the podium. We'd like to present you with this proclamation.
Thank you, sir. I should also note that Chief Green is going to read this off later at their event later this month. I won't do it here. Hold this. Take a second. There you go.
Thank you. If you'd like to say a few words, we'd love to hear from you.
Thank you very much, Mayor. Members of council, ladies and gentlemen. October is always Domestic Violence Awareness Month. That is a huge problem we have going on in our country. And y'all may not realize it, but inside of this room right here, and I don't know who the person is, but somebody in this room has experienced domestic violence. If they weren't the victim themselves, they've seen it in their family. It is a huge problem we have, and we have got to do everything we can to try to combat that. And the police... I retired from the Sheriff's Office last November, and I know that we are not going to arrest this problem away. If you can't do that, you've got to fix it through education and training. I invite everybody out on October 24th to the memorial over at the courthouse. There will be a press conference and public service announcement, education type thing for domestic violence. Please come by, because this is something we've got to handle. The children of domestic violence are bound to repeat what they see happening if we don't stop them. Thank you very much, Mayor and Members of council. I appreciate it very much.
Absolutely. Thank you, Eric. Thank you for being with us, and thanks for what you do.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
At this time, we will roll right into a Vision Plan update. Vision Plan update for October 2018. The Lexington Live Concert Series is in full effect. Our concert series will run again this Thursday at 6:30, and this Thursday, we will have The Finesse Band. The following Thursday, October 11th, we will have The Root Doctors. For a full list of events at the Ice House Amphitheater, you can visit our website at The Hops and Harvest Craft Beer Festival will happen Friday, November 9th, from 6:00 PM to 10:00 PM at the Ice House Amphitheater. Tickets are on sale. They are $30 in advance and $40 the week of the event. This is a 21 and older event. IDs will be checked to enter that event. Again, that is the Hops and Harvest Craft Beer Festival on November 9th. Tickets include a complimentary beer tasting glass, unlimited tastings, and live music from Lexington's own Trent Jeffcoat. Tickets can be purchased at icehouseamphitheater.com or at the Fats Cafe on 942 East Main Street. Proceeds benefit the Virginia Hilton Park Committee... Way to go, Hazel. ...and their efforts to upgrade the park as part of the Town of Lexington's Vision I'm excited to announce this month, we are welcoming back Resurrection. It's a Journey tribute band, and the South Carolina native, Edwin McCain. Both of these events are sold out. We look forward to concerts on October 19th and 20th. That is the Vision Plan update for October 2018. At this time, I will turn it over to Mayor Pro Tem for a traffic update.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The Jenny Lane and I-20 exit ramp improvements are underway. Please be aware of changing traffic patterns, shoulder work, and nighttime lane closures in this area. They were out there today in full force, working and doing things. SC DOT has nearly completed the sidewalk project along US-1 Augusta Highway towards I-20 and is set to begin sidewalk installations along South Chirp Street near Robert Street intersection in the coming weeks. The next traffic committee meeting will be Wednesday, November 14th, at 8:00 AM in the third-floor conference room of Town Hall. Finally, if you're aware of any traffic signal issue, unsafe roadway situation, or a pothole that needs repair, please call 358-7273 and let us know.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem. At this time, we will open up to public hearings. Our first public hearing is final reading of an ordinance annexing Lexington County Tax Map Number 3500-04-025, located at 4787 Sunset Boulevard. Anyone here wish to speak to that? Hearing none. Item number two, final reading of an ordinance for the Authorization of Water and Sewer Revenue Bonds and Bond Anticipation Notes. Anyone here wish to speak to that? Hearing none. That concludes our public hearings for this evening. We will move right into old business. Our first item of old business is from Councilmember Kathy Manis. Final reading of an ordinance annexing Lexington County Tax Map Number 3500-04-025, located at 4787 Sunset Boulevard. Councilmember Kathy Manis.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council. GNL Investments of Lexington LLC owns one acre located at 4787 Sunset Boulevard and has petitioned to annex the property. A small commercial building is located on the site. Properties in town near this one are zoned general commercial, and Sunset Boulevard is classified as an arterial road. The Planning Commission reviewed this annexation during their September meeting and recommended the same zoning and road classification for this parcel. I make a motion for final reading approval.
Councilmember Manis makes a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Councilmember Williams, second. Substitution, any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. That is unanimous. Our next item of old business is from Councilmember Todd Carnes. Final reading of an ordinance for the Authorization of Water and Sewer Revenue Bonds and Bond Anticipation Notes. Councilmember Carnes.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The Town's Water and Sewer System Capital Improvement Plan for fiscal year 2019 totals approximately $14.4 million. Additionally, the cost of the I-20 system may be finalized in the next several months and may require interim financing. The overall financing plan includes a mix of capital contribution, fee income, retained earnings, state revolving, fund loans, and bond issuances. Accordingly, the financing plan requires a supplemental bond ordinance to authorize water and sewer revenue bonds and bands. The supplemental ordinance will authorize various series of bonds and bands which will not exceed $19.5 million in total. Bands will be issued to provide interim financing for capital projects, including the Cromer Road Pump Station and upgrades to water pumping capacity at the Lake Murray Water Treatment Facility, in addition to the resolution of the I-20 system acquisition. Permanent, long-term bond financing is anticipated in fiscal year 2021 upon completion of the projects. I make a motion for final reading, approval of an ordinance authorizing water and sewer revenue bonds and bond anticipation notes.
Councilmember Carnes makes a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Councilmember Lau, seconds. The motion, any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. That is unanimous. At this time, we will move into new business. Our first item of new business is from Councilmember Ron Williams. First reading of an ordinance to expand the downtown overlay district. Councilmember Williams.
Thank you, Mayor. The downtown overlay district allows some flexibility in the zoning and landscape requirements for properties that are part of the overlay. It is intended to encourage occupancy of existing buildings and protect the unique character of the downtown area. With the One Way Pair Project completed and plans being developed to widen North Lake Drive, the Planning Commission has recommended expanding the overlay district to include all properties that front on North Lake Drive and Columbia Avenue, as shown on the attached map. I'd like to make a motion for first reading approval.
Councilmember Williams makes a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Councilmember Baker, second. Set motion. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. That is unanimous. Our next item of new business is from Councilmember Steve Baker. First reading of an ordinance regarding filing by candidates for mayor and council. Councilmember Steve Baker.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council. Town Council is being asked to consider changing its method of qualifying candidates for the municipal election ballot. Currently, state law allows either the petition method, which the town currently uses, or the filing of a statement of candidacy and payment of a filing fee. There is currently little guidance on the allowed amount of the filing fee for nonpartisan municipal elections. There is some concern that a fee which is too high may be seen as inequitable. Attached is a list of filing fees for other jurisdictions in South Carolina. At the council work session in September, it was recommended that the filing fee be set at 1.5% of the total salary for the term of office. This would set the filing fee for mayor at $750 and for council at $630. Also attached is a draft of the proposed ordinance, as well as a sample of statement of candidacy. I make a motion for first reading approval.
Councilmember Baker makes a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Council... Mayor Pro Tem, second. Set motion. Any further discussion?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to...
Yes, sir. Mr. Lau.
Having collected about 1,000 signatures on two different occasions over the last four months, I'm very excited that we're doing this. So I'm looking forward to not having to do that, or anyone else having to do that.
And everybody knows I gave that second, but this has been a very tough decision for me to make over the years, because I still believe in the petition process. But I agree that it is probably time to go a different route, and this has been a very hard decision, but I gave y'all my second, okay?
Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. That is unanimous. How about that? Our next item of new business is from Councilmember Todd Lau. First reading of an ordinance relating to the Set Off Debt Collection Act. Councilmember Todd Lau.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The town currently participates in the Set Off Debt Collection Program offered by the South Carolina Department of Revenue through the Municipal Association. This program withholds income tax refunds from individuals to pay past due water and sewer fees when the individual has left the town without paying their final bill. Over the last three years, the town has collected an average of approximately $10,000 in bad debt using this program. To continue anticipation of this program, the town must adopt the attached ordinance and sign the attached agreement with the Municipal Association. Mr. Mayor, I would move that we get a first reading approval on this.
Councilmember Lau makes a motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Councilmember Manis, second. Set motion. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. That is unanimous. Our next item of new business is from Mayor Pro Tem Hazel Livingston. First reading of an amendment to the Lane Closure Ordinance. Mayor Pro Tem.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. At the September 17th work session, council discussed an amendment to the restrictions for daytime lane closures due to construction on US-1, US-378, and SC-6. Ordinance 2018-11, a copy of ordinance 2018-11 and a draft of the proposed amended ordinance are attached. I make a motion for first reading approval.
Mayor Pro Tem makes a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Councilmember Baker, second. Set motion. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. That is unanimous. Our next item of new business is from Councilmember Kathy Manis. SCENG and MCEC Service Area Agreement. Councilmember Kathy Manis.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council. In an effort to prevent service disputes, SCENG and MCEC have tentatively agreed to new map delineating their service areas. Each of the respective entities serve customers in the corporate limits of the Town of Lexington, and acquiescence to the agreement is requested from the Town of Lexington. The proposed agreement is attached, as well as the proposed maps outlining the respective service areas. I make a motion for council approval.
Councilmember Manis makes a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Councilmember Carnes, second. Set motion. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. That is unanimous. Our next item of new business is from Councilmember Todd Carnes. Lexington District 1 Educational Foundation Celebration of Excellence in Education. Councilmember Carnes.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Town Council has budgeted $1,000 for the Lexington District 1 Educational Foundation Celebration of Excellence in Education event each year since 2013. At the September 17th council work session, Ms. Julie Washburn, Executive Director of the Lexington District 1 Educational Foundation, requested council consider increasing the town sponsorship level to a diamond sponsor at $2,500. This event honors the top 10% of graduating seniors from the five high schools in District 1. A copy of the request letter and sponsorship form is attached. Mr. Mayor, I make a motion that we approve $1,750 for this Lexington 1 District event. Period.
Councilmember Carnes makes a motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Councilmember Williams, second. Substitution. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. All those opposed? Thank you very much. Our next item of new business is from Councilmember Ron Williams. Lexington Surtoma Club Sponsorship Request. Councilmember Williams.
Thank you, Mayor. The Lexington Surtoma Club will hold their annual Big Thursday event at the Town's Conference Center on October 18th. Mr. Butch Ballington contacted the mayor and requested a $500 field goal sponsorship, which would reserve a table for eight at the event. Put this out there in form of a motion for the $500 to be approved.
Councilmember Williams makes a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Councilmember Carnes, second. Substitution. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. That is unanimous. At this time, we will hear announcements from Councilmember Steve Baker.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As earlier announced, this Thursday, we continue the Lexington Live Concert Series at 6:30 with finesse. So come out Thursday for some great music, and next Thursday, The Root Doctors will be back. Also this Thursday, the Board of Zoning Appeals will meet here at 5:30 in the council chambers. On the 13th, the Lexington County Museum will host Murders and Mysteries Tour at 8:00 PM. Council will meet again on October 15th at 6:00 PM for the council work session in the Eli Mack Room. The Board of Appearance will meet at 9:00 AM on October 16th here in the council chambers. We've got some busy boards and commissions. The Planning Commission will meet Wednesday, October 17th at 8:00 AM, also in council chambers. On October 18th and 19th, the Lexington County Museum will host their Haunted History Tour at 231 Fox Street, with tours starting at 7:00, 8:00, and 9:00 PM. Tickets are $6 for adults and $3 for children. The Lexington Police Department will hold their annual Fall Festival on October 23rd from 5:30 to 8:30. Tickets are $5 per person or $20 per immediate family. Thanks to the Police Department for always making this a great event, and they do. I've been there for the last couple of years, and it is a good one. The Dickerson Center will host Domestic Violence Awareness Day on October 24th at 10:00 AM at the Lexington Square Park. The Lexington County Recreation and Aging Commission will host two movies in the park and a trick-or-treat trail in the Virginia Hilton Park on October 26th at 6:30 with Toy Story of Terror, and October 27th at 7:00 with So the Story Goes. On October 31st, the mayor, along with the Lexington County Blowfish, will host the 2018 Mayor's Prayer Breakfast at Lexington County Baseball Stadium from 7:30 AM to 9:00 AM. The speaker is Adrian Despress, who was the chaplain for USC's football team from 2000 to 2015. To purchase tickets, visit goblowfishbaseball.com, and those tickets are $10. We hope you have a great October and a happy Halloween, and thank you for watching your Town Council in action tonight.
Thank you, Councilmember Baker. Any other member have anything they'd like to share? Since we talked about boards and commissions, Chuck Coyle is in the crowd. I want to say hello to you and your lovely wife. Thank y'all for being with us. Haven't seen y'all in a while. Thanks for what you do. I'm sorry our boards and commission dinner got rained out. I think Hurricane... I think Hurricane Florence came through town again, but we'll try to redo that in the near future soon and get y'all together and show you how much we appreciate your time and energy that you put into the town. We appreciate it. Any questions from the news media tonight? All right. We'll move right into public comments. Any public comments on tonight's agenda? Want to say hello to my shadow this afternoon. Kayla was with us this afternoon, walked around a little bit. She learned a little bit about what the mayor does in the afternoons. Thank you for being here. Her parents were neighbors of mine in my neighborhood. They've now moved to a different neighborhood, but still in town, and we go to church together and loved having you today. Hope you enjoyed it. Thank you. If no one has anything else, that concludes our business for this evening. Thank you for watching the Town Council meeting for the Town of Lexington. This meeting was held at Town Hall on Monday evening, October 1st, 2018. A recording of this meeting will be aired on the town's information cable channel, 1301, several times during this week, and a video will be available on the town's website at lexsc.com. On behalf of Town Council and staff, I wish you all a good evening. Without objection, we are adjourned.